And then questions back over there, alright. Okay? And if everybody wants water, it's back over there in the cooler. Okay?
Tell us a little about yourself and your professional experiences.
Alright, well, my name is Justin Hayes. I grew up in Lincoln, Nebraska, and after that went to private Christian university college in York, Nebraska. And I kind of debated about what I wanted to do. I really liked working with troubled teens and troubled kids. And so I started working at a place called Everett Village, which is a facility where a lot of kids get placed by the courts and by judges or by caseworkers. And so I worked there for about two and a half years throughout college and it kind of sparked interest in working with kids. And as a student who didn't always learn very easy, I kind of know what it's like to struggle and then to have some difficulties. So I just kind of took a knack to it and it kind of sparked me in wanting to go into education. At the time I was still kind of undecided when I went first into college about what I wanted to do and what direction I wanted to go. So I decided to go into special education and I spent five years, I think, there, 2001 to '06, so yeah, five years there. And I graduated midterm and I took a job at OPS, Omaha Public Schools, and I worked at their expelled school three days later. So I was, I went from York, Nebraska, to 30th and Ames, 30th and Hamilton, actually, in Omaha. Worked there expelled school and it was trial by fire. I learned a lot on the job and just, I was kind of, you know, you learn a lot when you get into debate. You never really know what you're going to deal with when you get into mental health and behavior. And so I enjoyed it, but I was young and single and was like, Iowa has signing bonuses for special ed teachers. I interviewed Council Bluffs and I got a job there. I spent a wonderful five years there. They went through a process of hiring new superintendents, just trying to change some culture and change some, just changed a lot of things. From the perception from the ground work up or top down, however you want to describe it. And so they brought me as a superintendent and I was CPI district director there, which is kind of like MANT. It's a non-physical intervention, crisis intervention for when students need it. I got to co-teach history. I was dual endorsed in history and special ed. And so I was able to give history credit, but also able to teach special ed. So I had a lot of pull-out classes. About six weeks in, they were like, hey, we got rid of this level two program. We want you to go back and teach. And I'm like, I just left the strictly behavior program to come here. And so I just agreed to do it halftime with another teacher that they had hired from Des Moines the same year I started there. And so I went back and did that for the year. At the end of the year, they hired a teacher. I gotta go back just to co-teaching. I did Medicaid building for the entire school there. And it was there where I had a assistant principal who was kind of like, hey, have you ever thought of being administrator? And I was like, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, everyone wants to be administrator, right? You know, and so I started taking classes at UNO. And so I went to UNO and graduated two years later with my masters. And Iowa's unique though because you have to be K through 12 endorsed to be administrator. In Nebraska, you can either be seven through 12 or you can beat PK through eight. But in Iowa, you're required to beat PK through 12. So I completed all my classroom work and I did my practicum for my seven through 12 because I was, I was a football coach as well. I was a bowling coach. I was involved in every activity possible. And that's one thing I really believe in is that if you're successful, you gotta be able to do those things. So kids see you buy in and that you're actively involved in the community. And I did a lot of different things, you know, from those types of things to going to music and plays and just, I wanted to be everything so kids knew I was invested in them. And so I spent my time there and just after about five years, I kind of was like, you know, I've done so much here. I really needed to get some different experiences. So I went to Bellevue Public Schools and worked in their level three program. And it was there where I kind of, I kind of said that, I always thought I wanted to be an AD, having been a football coach and being involved in sports. And so I went to Bellevue and I worked strictly in the level three program. I had behavior students. We also had students who have Down's syndrome or have autism who had cognitive disabilities. And I spent two years there. I was on a couple, I was on the curriculum writing team for the social studies department. So I got some genit experience too as well by going there to work with curriculum writing from that standpoint. And then I also was on a district committee for IEPs and IFSPs, which is the July's Educational Plans. And the IFSPs are for the birth to five age. And so we were just on a committee to try to streamline that because principals are very busy people. And to have them come to so many IEPs, so many IFSPs, they get lengthy, two, three hours. Their director of sped really wanted to kind of create a guideline, I guess you could say, or a agenda a teacher could use just to follow. So I gotta do that. And after being there, I was like, well, I kind of maybe want to try this administrator route thing. And I applied at ESU at Neely. And I went and talked to my director of sped, who I did some mentorship with. I also finished up my practicum for my PK through eight part, so I could be K through 12 endorsed. And I applied in Neely. I interviewed a week later and got off the job a week later and I came to Norfolk, being in Lincoln, Omaha, which was a big change. You know, I don't miss the traffic by any means and I don't miss the rush, rush, rush. It's been, it's been nice. Throughout that time, I also had two daughters born. And I can sit across the table and know what it's like to be a parent. I have a daughter who has autism, so you know, I understand what it's like to struggle. She lives in Norfolk with her mom and so she gets great services there with, you know, Norfolk Public Schools. And so it just kind of worked out that that's where we both were at. And I came to Neely and I've done a lot of different things. I wear a lot of different hats on different days. It kind of depends. I'm strictly the principal of the four learning centers. We have four different buildings, one in O'Neill, two in Neely, one in Norfolk, which serves students who have cognitive disability. Usually we save a little IQ of 70 just because we can't take strictly behavior students because we do have some students who are in wheelchairs and those types of things who can't defend themselves. But I also do a lot of different things. I've done PBIS with O'Neill Public Schools, for example, where we implemented PBIS SchoolWire, which is positive behavioral instructional support, which is just kind of a, a lot of times people think that's a behavior model for our school and it's really not what it is. It's just teaching expectations to the students. And it's kind of just saying teachers have to be successful in classes and things like that. So I've done a lot of professional development in that route. You know, I've, I've done behavior consults for foster kids who move into districts. And so I wear a lot of different hats on a lot of different days. And it kind of depends on what district calls and what kind of needs they have that day or that week. And throughout that time, I actually started taking my ed specials courses at UNK, which has led me to where I'm at today, so.
So compared to what you're currently doing now, what makes this job interesting to you and why would you apply for this position?
Um, you know, I, I, I serve, I guess you could say, Plainview. I've always served a lot of other schools. I think it's a good school system. I think there are good people here. I think there's good kids here. You have good administrators. You have good teachers. And that's one thing, especially when you go around to look for a superintendent, you kind of look at a lot of different things. And you look at, you know, the reputation this school has. You look at the school board and you look at kind of all the big things. Is that really a fit for me? Is that really not? A, and then B, you know, I also, I'm at a point in my life where I've, like I said, I've been in the rush, rush, rush. And I'm kind of at the point where I'm like, you know, I'd rather find somewhere I can settle down, just be me, have a good relationship with people, with the community and, you know, grow old, I guess, grow old, I'm not that old, but you know, grow old. And, and, and there's going to be challenges along the way. I can, I can promise you, I won't have all the answers. What I can promise you is that I know the people I can call. That's one thing I really hang my hat on too, is having a good network, a strong individual I can lean on. Because nobody will ever have all the answers and there'll be struggles. There'll be things where we don't see eye to eye. And I think that it's important to understand those things upfront because it sets you up for success in the future. And I, I just thought that Plainview was, I think it's a good, I think it's a good school system. I think there's good people here and I think it's a good place to be.
What are your strengths and weaknesses as a potential superintendent?
My weaknesses are the lack of experience, I guess you could say, as actually being a superintendent. It's really hard to get that experience unless you're doing the job, you know. Kind of what you joke with some other friends of mine in the profession where it's like, you know, you really don't get to do your own budget until you do your own budget, you know. A good mentor of mine is Alan Ayers in Madison. I'm just kind of like, you know, how do you ever know when you're ready for that? Because how do you know when you're really, really ready for that? And I, you know, it's kind of a joke. He's like, well, you never know until you're doing it, you know? He kind of just joked around. He's like, you know, you're not going to really know until you're doing it, what you're doing 100%. You know, you can take courses and you can take classes and teach you those things. So I guess my weakness, I would probably say, would be my experiences. What do I bring as a strength? I'm big on relationships. I'm big on being involved and big on being visible and being accessible. And it's not just an open door policy type approach I take. It's just that I believe in collaboration and working together. Because I think that the best plans are made when it's not just my idea, but it's multiple people's ideas and different perspectives.
Okay, listen, all your accomplishments as an administrator.
Okay. When I came here, we really, you know, sorry, how I want to answer that. You know, there are a lot of things on the bus. But when I came here, you know, the learning center costs were increasing a lot. So I was kind of charged with weighing that in, I guess you could say. And it's not just going to happen overnight. We decreased our costs in the two years I've been here. Not just strictly because of what I'm doing. It's because, you know, I've created this system of accountability for my teachers and just kind of protocols, put them in place for when we want to approve requisitions or not and those types of things. Just to not make it an open door policy where it's like, whatever you want, you get. And so that was really kind of one thing that we took, I took on head on was, you know, first off, I learned, I learned I'm not going to change overnight. I'm not going to go from X, Y, Z dollars to the A, B, C dollars just overnight. And so it was just a system of creating some accountability, creating some different ways of looking at things and being unique. So that's one thing that really hung our hat on was our, our costs decreased for those two years. You know, this year is a little unique because the need for speech paths and the need for psychologists is outrageous. The schools are putting out very, very few. There was 10 that graduated in this area from schools for speech paths. And there was 10 openings alone between Norfolk and us. And they're all going to go to the metro and work because it's going to pay more. You know, so this year, you know, I, I know where our budget's kind of going. We never really know until the end of the year. But that's one thing I was kind of charged with. But also just creating a system of accountability for our teachers to complete IEPs and paperwork in a timely manner, much like, you know, any report, especially when it's a legal binding document, that there's things that need to be expected, that you're going to complete this, you're going to go back to home school in ten days. So, you know, when NDE comes out and does a power review, it's not, because we don't get dinged. It's a school getting dinged. And so I'm just creating some protocols and systems for those places, things to be in place. And we have great people working there and they are highly trained and they're good at what they do. But, you know, I also created some, a little bit of a culture need, you know, kind of the way you look at things. And sometimes you look at it and it can be like, all the crap's running downhill to me. And I can take that and say, oh, well, I'm going to create hope in my kids and I'm going to create hope in my system. And a kind of a stat I learned this last week, which is kind of interesting, that people who create an atmosphere of hope actually will work 14% harder in a week, which actually equals one day a week when you add up all five days. Which is kind of interesting fact that just, it's a Gallup poll. It's going to be actually released on March 15th by Gallup if they did their research, studying just hope in schools. And that was what they found, was that schools who are even more, who have leaders who create hope, have kids that are more engaged, that have teachers that are more successful. And so, you know, it's kind of what I've done with my culture, I guess you could say. And I didn't think about going and thinking of it being hope. It was something interesting that I happened to run across this past week. And that, you know, we created a culture where, you know, we don't agree with what I have to say or think, let's talk about it. And I always try to give a reason why I do things because I'm a very inquisitive person. I always want to know why. Well, why do we need to do that? Why do we need to do this? And that's how I was. And so I always give my teachers and my staff, here's what we need to do and here's why we're going to do it. So I'm thinking a little, just a few, those are just a few things along the way, you know. Working with districts and doing PBIS and decreases, suspensions, expulsions. You know, in O'Neill, working strictly with their elementary school to try to reduce the need for the principal to deal with a lot of minor issues so they can actually focus on the curriculum side of things where students can make improvements.
Especially if we have four really good candidates, how can you convince us that you're the one for the job?
The one for the job? I'm going to follow through. I'm going to do what I say. You know, I think if you'd ask my references, I have some very, I have some people who are references of mine that are very well respected across the state. You know, I guess I don't want to hang my hat on this, but, you know, Bill Mowinkle, who is the administrator at ESU at, is very well respected across the state, has been a retired superintendent from Grand Island Northwest. He kind of joked and he's like, you know, he goes, I'm not going to lie to you, you got, you got pretty good, pretty big interviews and pretty good candidates. And he goes, I straight up asked the search firm when I was potentially going to go this other route, a different firm. He goes, just straight up asking, when you have 20 people apply, how do you pull him out? And he's like, well, he goes, we can call you and people know who you are, Bill. He goes, and Dr. Nelson at UNK is pretty well respected. He goes, there's not very many people across the state that don't know you two. And like I said, and the first thing he'd tell you is, I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm not afraid to do things. And so I guess why would I say that? Why, why am I the best choice is that I'm going to follow through. I'm going to come, I'm going to be committed to the community, I'm going to be the school board. Teachers might not always like the answers I give or staff might not. But that's also, you know, where my job comes in is I'm kind of the buffer between the school board and the staff. And so sometimes there's tough decisions that are made and they're not always going to be favored or liked. But you know, it's looking at what's best for kids and making sure that we're empowering them to be successful in the future.
We've got an easier one for you. What do you do for recreation and how do you relax?
I like Nebraska football. And they're good, no.
So what do you do?
You know, I coached football for a long time. I'm still kind of involved in coaching. I coach for the Sussie D. Bandits currently. We practice one night a week. So I go to Sussie on Wednesday nights for practice. They kind of, they know that, you know, it's, it's an outlet, I guess you could say. I enjoy it. We deal, you know, dealing with 22 and 30-year-olds instead of 15, 14, 16-year-olds, which is very different in itself. You know, you have some guys who think they're in cattle, kind of like you do sometimes. You have, you know, athletes who think that these are playing kind of, that's the thing I love to do. I also love to learn, kind of taken upon myself, just, I like to know, I like to know facts. I like to know data about, like the hope, the hope thing. Like, you know, some people are like, well, why do you want to know about people that really cares, you know? But just to be able to kind of back up what you believe and what you feel. And that's why I continue my education. I decided to get my doctorate. There's some different options, but just, just not because I want to have my doctorate, but kind of be proud of myself. And so those are the things I like to do. I haven't hunted yet, but I want to venture in the hunting maybe. People see me when I cross that bridge. I'm not so convinced they do it, but I haven't done it yet. So, you know, really, I love, I love sports. I love to be at sporting events, play sports, shoot the ball, throw a baseball, whatever that be.
Find the role of the board and the role of the superintendent.
You know, the role of the board is to create a vision with a superintendent. You know, it's a partnership, I believe, that, you know, the board is to help set policies and procedures for the superintendent to implement. And you're kind of that, you're that CEO, I guess you could say, of the company with a superintendent. And it's your job to oversee the employees, to oversee the administrators, to give them the tools they need and vice versa. So, you know, my job with the board is to do and to know their vision, their mission for where we're going to go and how we're going to get there, but also giving them ideas of how we can do that together.
Okay. What's your philosophy in delegating authority?
This is something I've learned along the way. You know, I was one who was always kind of going to do it myself because I know it's going to get done. But I've learned that it's okay to give other people power. And sometimes you have to trust those, those individuals and give them the power to say, yeah, I can do this or yeah, I can't. And so for me, I believe that there's some things where I need to address them. There's some times where things where I might have, like, working a whole series talking. But, no, anyway, so, you know, for me, delegating power, I think that, you know, each person has a role and kind of like a chain of command. You know, I don't expect a teacher to come directly to my office as a superintendent, sit there and say, hey, Mrs. or Mrs. so-and-so's not doing their job. There's a, there's a line of command and I think that, you know, that needs to be followed. But also goes to delegating power, you know. Give your teachers, you know, the tools by empowering the principal to go make decisions, you know. And also giving that principal though, the training or the support or the things that he or she might need to better themselves as well. And I think that, you know, for me, I love to challenge people. And I don't mean to challenge them in a bad way. I just mean to sometimes ask them about, look at things and think about things different from different lenses. Because we all have our own unique experiences and we all can look at different things with different experiences. And so I think that part of that delegation is that sometimes you give them, you know, if, if you have a administrator who struggles with curriculum, well, maybe, maybe I need to provide some type of training where you can attend and get some better background. Or maybe you have a teacher that, you know, struggles with classroom management. So what kind of do I empower you by sending up some staff development, professional development for you to build and improve yourself? And so that goes back to delegating that power to the principal or to the AD or whatever that be in those situations.
How do you maintain accountability?
I think that, you know, I, for me, I, you know, especially when it's special, we have, we have deadlines. We have a lot of, you know, issues that are legal binding, especially when you get the IEPs and things like that. But, you know, I can be something to say, it's with me. But as far as creating accountability, I think that that goes back to having relationships. You know, you have to be accessible. You have to have and give them the tools to be successful. But they're only going to be as accountable as, as you also help them be. And so I think that just having systems in place that, you know, with, with deadlines and expectations that are upfront, with a vision and mission that are upfront, that's continually expressed, that's consistently expressed. So there's not a lot of, oh, what about this, what about that? It's, you know, this has been consistent from day one and this is where we're going and this is how we're going to get there.
How do you work with a principal?
Well, I work with a principal for. You know, I think that, kind of like, you know, kind of like parents, a lot of times they're the first line of defense a parent's going to go to when they're upset. They're not going to come, don't get me wrong, they might come to the superintendent. But, you know, I think that, like I said, you know, empowering them, have a relationship with them that's open door, that says, you know, I'm going to trust what you're doing is the right thing to do. But also, like you said, accountability, where if they're not doing what they need to be doing, it might be a conversation me or him, her, or me and him have to say, I think these things should be done a little differently. This is what I expect. So that relationship, I think, is a give and take and it's one with mutual respect. Where we both are consistent in what we're saying, but we're also open-minded about what we're doing.
What are the main things a good principal does?
They're reflective. They are proactive and not reactive. They communicate. They're accessible. You know, I think those things would encompass a lot of other things I believe a principal should be. You know, I think that, you know, they need to have an open mind to a lot of different things. Because as a principal, you're wearing a lot of different hats. You know, it might be discipline one day, it might be staff issues one day, it might be parent issues five minutes later. And you might have an emergency pop up with a fire alarm going off, you know, and you have lots of hats you have to wear. And so I think that, you know, those things are important as far as, you know, especially that reflective piece for me is important. And that's one thing I really hang my hat on with myself as well. But, you know, I try to think about what I want to say. I might write it down and I'll come back and visit it more and if that's still what I want to say, then maybe I send it. But maybe I need to take some time to think about it. Is that really what I want to say? Is that how I want to say it? Or is it just something that's bothering me and I just need to roll off my back?
Have you ever been involved in teacher negotiations? And if so, what would your, your opinion of the role be?
I have, on a small scale. And, you know, I believe that going in with, you know, the role of superintendent obviously is, is to work with the board to create a package, I guess you, what you, what I would call it, that's, you know, mutually, I'm trying to think of how I want to answer that. That's mutually entertaining, I guess is the word I might use. But I think that, you know, going in with knowledge and one with knowing where you're at as a district. I was tired, now I pulled your guys' data off NDE websites, I'll call it. And I actually made a website, I didn't bring, but I can give you the link. You guys can email to the app works. It has your data from NDE on like, what your teachers do with master degrees, what your teacher salary is. And just from my brief snapshot look, I think that personally, that you guys pay is, is in the top of those schools that you compare with. You know, I just pulled like, Osman Randolph or some of those in the area to look at, compare teachers, for teachers, you know. And that's just, that's visible on NDE's websites. And so I think that having some of those tools when you go in, knowing where you're at as a district, but also know where you're at financially, where you're at classroom size, gives the school board the tools that they need. Instead of just going in blindly thinking, oh, well, you know, I need, because no offense, you know, I was a teacher once. I'm going to, I'm going to say I need a lot of things if I'm going to continue to get them. But if I understand where we're going and why, it might be a little different.
Are you familiar with the financial accounting systems and budgets?
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I'm involved in some school program stuff as well. But as far as budgets, like I said, you know, I, I know I've done budgets on how you assess valuation, you know, the resources. Because have I created my own? I have not, because you can't really do that until you're doing that with somebody. But I think that, you know, my vision is that I anticipate sitting down with the parents with the one who's, you know, leaving, retiring, going out their own money, and have a conversation to see where we're at. Also, you lean on your secretaries a lot because the ones, and no offense, they're the first person you want, you're your best friend because they know everything in and out. They're usually the one who puts the data in the computer and those things. But also, you know, grants are important and deadlines and the financial, you know, accounting. And having worked for the ESU that serves, you know, there's also a lot of tools that you can tap into that can assist you in that sense from, you know, whether it be Bill or, you know, me and Ruth, special ed wise, you can, you can tap into, they use as, as resources.
How does a superintendent and board of education encourage great teaching?
Encourage great teaching? I think you got to create a culture that's, a culture that has accountability, is respectful, perspectives. One where we are, we're going to challenge our students, we're going to create student-centered curriculum and learning, but also one where we say, we're going to have expectations for you and that you're going to be a good teacher. And if not, we're going to give you the tools to get there. Does that mean I'm going to baby walk you there or the principal's going to baby walk you there? No, but I think you just got to create a, a culture where it's, it's respectful and where it's, it's positive and where you are encouraging. You know, I'll use an example for me, like with my teachers, you know, we do a lot of different things with our students and they go in the community, they do dances and they put on a wonderful prom. And so I could easily send an email to my teachers and say, hey, great job of putting on prom. Or I could just take 30 seconds out of my day and walk down to their classroom and say, hey, thanks for coming to prom this weekend. That meant a lot. It's my conversation with you for that 30 seconds means a whole heck of a lot more. And so I'm very big on creating people, being visible, being in the hallway. I'm just going, my room and closing the door. But just make, having a small conversation and say, hey, you know, great job at the play last night. Great job at the musical and let them know that I value them, which in turn, I think they're going to see that it's going to create them to want to work harder for you. When I say you, I meant, you know, the, the school because they have a leader that they see as supporting them, but also encouraging them and realizes that they're putting a lot of time and effort into many, many things and can deal with many, many other things. You know, you have kids in class that nink around, who don't come, who don't want to be there. If you do come, then they have 15 missing assignments. And so, you know, just let them know that you value them.
What is the most important first step that a superintendent should take?
You have a transition plan. And what I mean by that is you have some goals and deadlines you set for yourself. You know, that first month, I think, is important to know where you're at as a district financially. Getting to know the board members. You know, what I really want to do is, I become a superintendent once again with each board member individually and whether it be on lunch over, you know, a snack in the afternoon and just say, what is your goals for this district? Where do you want to go and what are your goals for me? Because each of you has different ideas of what's important. It doesn't mean that they're all bad and they're all indifferent, but one of you might really have a strong belief that we really need to work on our special ed population. Or you might feel we really need to work on our financial issues. Or one of you might really need to work on facilities. And so just understanding what your six ideas are and what your visions are. Because I know when I'm serving you as a leader, what your needs are as well. You know, I, I think that knowing is there any immediate needs with the building? Is there air conditioning broke? Is the heater broke? Is, is there some emergency needs that we absolutely have to address right now in July? Or is there some things coming down the road that we need to address? And so just getting a handle on knowing those things and really getting to know the board policies, procedures. What do the policies exactly say? What are the procedures? And are they up to current law? Are they currently legally, you know, with expectations, you know, put out there by Great Perry or Karen Housen? The couple different law firms that are out there, just to know and make sure that we're legally where we, where we should be.
Okay. What communication methods would you, would you use between the school and the community that would help establish a community?
I anticipate doing a newsletter monthly just to spotlight staff and or spotlight students that get things going on. But also just to let them know about the activities coming up. You know, that we have parent-teacher conferences, we have plays, musicals, is there a football game? Is there a basketball game? And it doesn't have to be something long, but also just to let them know that we're here to serve them as a school district. And that's really what we are. We're in a business of service. You know, I'm a, I believe in servant leadership. I'm here to serve the principal, to serve the community, to serve the school board, to serve the teachers. And if that means that maybe it comes in their classroom, helps something, I'm more than looking for their classroom, helps something in that sense. But, you know, as far as working with the community, they got to see that you're here, not just Monday through Friday. They got to see that you're here and involved in many different things. Like I said, having been a coach, you know, I could get things for, I could get kids to do things that other teachers couldn't because I invested time. And I have a strong belief that that's what you have to do with your community is, they have to see that you're here to invest your time and your effort and, and your money and your other things because you're a valued member of this community. It's not just, you know, I show up on Monday morning at 7:30 and I leave Friday at 3:30. But, you know, I'm at the county fair on Saturday or Sunday. or I'm at the, you know, BFW on Monday evening, you know, talking with older guys, or whatever that be, you know, just be involved in many different things.
How do schools improve?
How do schools improve?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're honest with themselves, they challenge themselves, they'll get unique with how they wanna, especially, you know, working in a room, having been in the metro, you know, looking at how we can give our students the best opportunities, and that might mean being unique in what we do. Can I give you a specifics exactly without digging deeper? You know, I can, there's a, you know, a few things, I may not be able to think of off the top of my head, but just being unique with how we give our services to our students, you know, and being physically responsible when we do those things, and we do some of those things better with our other funds a different way. So I guess that would be my answer to you.
Thank you.
So how are you a decision maker?
I really believe you have to have buy-in, it's a, it's kind of a decision, I really think on some of the major things, you have to have some buy-in. And so I believe that, you know, you start with a group like this, where we talk about where we're going, what we need, what are we gonna do, and we narrow that group down to just, you know, some different key stakeholders, maybe it's the community, maybe it's teachers, maybe it's the administrators, maybe it's the A.D., the principal, and just narrow that down, so I can understand all, all their point of views, to be able to make a decision. Obviously, there's sometimes where decisions just have to be made, for example, I have a staff member go out and influence drugs once, I had to make a decision right then and there. It may, wasn't like I could call immediately and say, hey, should I let Bobby Joe go today or not, you know, I just simply said, this is unacceptable, you know, this isn't gonna happen, you need to go home and, and, you know, I'll talk to you tonight after work, because I didn't wanna make a rash decision right then and there. But, so some decisions require immediate, you know, immediate, know this is how it's gonna be, but I believe in some of those major decisions, you know, that affect a lot of people, getting those different stakeholder groups involved and having their input is valuable.
Next question is, you've had, dealt with working activities, and what you've had, sharing staff with other schools and stuff that do?
Um, you know, I have not dealt with that directly, you know, I understand, and that's one of those things, I said, where you get unique, where you might have to co-op, you know, you might have to have the wrestling team that wrestles with Plainview, but also ask some kids from Pierce or Osman, or, you know, wherever you decide to go, whatever's most, you know, phys, physically, you know, the smartest route, you know, is best we practice at Plainview and bring some of the kids from Osman, or is it best we partner with Pierce to do some things, and so, and, you know, I guess, I wouldn't really know how those relationships are with those other school districts without being kind of insider, you know, and kind of assume things, but I also think that, you know, sharing staff is something that you might have to do to be unique, especially when you get into some of those unique things, you know, could, could you share a speech path with somebody else and maybe save money instead of contracting that? Possibly, it might be an option, and so looking at those things, but also knowing if you have a partner to do those things with, you know, if we need a speech path on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and somebody else needs one on Tuesday, Thursday, because they don't have that many kids, could we, could we do it together fiscally differently and save money? You know, and so I think it takes a lot of looking at actual numbers and determining, but as far as co-oping those sports, I think that, I'm, I'm a big believer in kids being involved, I don't care if it's plays, musics, band, science, Olympiad, or football, but I believe that, you know, do whatever it takes to make sure the kids have opportunities to be involved is valid, you know, like bowling, you know, I was, I was a head bowling coach, and I knew nothing about bowling, and what I knew was I could get sixty kids out for a sport, because I was gonna be actively involved, because I was gonna make it engaging for them, so I think that's what we really gotta look at with co-op, and is how can we give our kids some unique opportunities by partnering with some different individuals, with different schools, with different agencies in the community, wherever that be.
What would you say your ideal size of school would be, be administrative, or?
Probably four to eight, nine hundred, you know, I don't, I, I like to know people, I like to know about, not know what they're involved with. I think if you get too big, you can't really know your people, that also can be a bad thing, because they know everything you do, they know everything that goes on, they know if, you know, your son or daughter does something dumb, which can be a bad thing, but I also think it helps you be more accountable to yourself, and so, for me, you know, school, it's between four and under a thousand. I set nine hundred, eight fifty mark, just because, you know, when you get to a thousand, it's quite a few people, I went to a high school of thirty-eight hundred kids, tenth through twelfth grade. I buy, I knew, I didn't even know all the people in my own class, you know, I mean, I knew, I mean, I knew some athletes that played football and those types of things, but I really like to get to know people personally and on a different level.
How valuable, valuable do you feel technology is in the school setting?
Um, I think it's essential in the world we live, and where we're going as a society, you know, letting our kids have access to technology, especially, you know, when you have some high poverty rates and things like that, where they might not have those experiences at home, that's key to set them up for success in the future. You know, I, I believe that the world's going to, I wanna say one-to-one initiative, but the world, I mean, that's where we're going as a society, you gotta work on what you use, use your computer. That takes a lot of steps along the way, you don't just one day say, hey, we're gonna do a one-to-one school, you gotta do some professional development for your staff, and you gotta look at the cost-benefit analysis, and you gotta look at, because if it's feasible, or could we, could we co-op and do this in a co-op situation, where we could buy and purchase things together with the other schools that are doing the same thing, and so, but I think that technology is gonna be essential as we move forward, it's only gonna change, and it creates engaging, you know, classrooms.
Okay, discussing this, a difficult personnel problem that you've dealt with and how it was resolved.
I kinda talked about, when I talked about some of the different things I did when I came, one of the things I had to deal with was, I had staff members who thought that without pay was a benefit. I guess we didn't actually put it, and they would use a god-awful amount of hours, I'm like, how do you keep your jobs? And this four hundred hours of work, like, you can't do that anywhere, and so I, and that was, it wasn't all staff, there was a handful of staff, it wasn't just one or two, it was, you know, a handful of staff, and so I had this protocol in place, to let them know that that's not acceptable, and that, you know, I'm not gonna allow you to just use without pay, it's not a benefit, first off. And so we kinda changed how we handled that. I also dealt with a, I had a staff member potentially assaulting a non-verbal autistic student, and so I had to work with the county sheriff on that. And when you deal with situations like that, you realize that, you know, when you're letting someone go and be fired, then, then a lot of times, that their family members are mad, and I knew that this person was the moneymaker in the family, and that the other half might be a little upset, so I knew going in, when this app reported to me, that that's, first off, that person was ever gonna step foot in my building again, for one, but also, there's other protocols I had to follow, I had to contact law enforcement, I had to make a phone call to a parent and say, hey, by the way, this just took place, I mean, I had to call the superintendent and say, oh, by the way, this also took place. Those aren't fun phone calls to make, you know, you don't know what, kind of being a, you really don't know what you have to do, and you don't know really what you're gonna say until you're in those situations, like, ah, you know, you can go to class, you can talk about, you know, creating accountability, and you gotta make those tough phone calls to parents, but you really don't know what it's like until you do it. And so, you know, I kept a calm head, and I went in and made a decision that this is how we're gonna proceed. Throughout that process, we also made some decisions, school, why were we gonna install cameras? So all of our hallways, and all of our rooms, except for the two front classrooms, have cameras in them, and that's accessible via a, a server that just downloads every thirty days. Anyway, do I go sit down, sit around and watch, watch cameras all day? No, but also, at the same time, I knew I wanted to protect my staff, A, and B, I wanted to protect me and myself as an administrator, to say, I don't wanna go into a different situation, because having four buildings and serving many different communities, I, there's no way I can be at that one building all the time. You know, there's no way that that administrator can be in every classroom every day, and so I knew that, we had to have some accountability there for that. And I'll be honest with you, my teachers were all for it, they were guncoed about it, they're like, we, you know, you know, if we do, we do it well, we have no issues for it. And like I said, it's not given to the public, I don't give it, you know, if I got subpoenaed, I would have to, but it's something just for my use and for my protection that I've never, I'll be honest, I watched it a couple of times just to see what it looked like, when I first got it, you know, it was like, well, is it a good picture or not, you know, because it spent a couple thousand dollars, but then, you know, thirteen cameras, let's see if it's worth the money. So that was a couple of different issues where I've had to deal with, where I had to make a decision right then and there, the staff member wasn't coming back, but also, what can I do in the future to help protect everybody involved?
What experience have any of you had writing bonds to supplement school spending for special projects?
Well, I've never wrote a bond, I've never been a superintendent. I do know that, um, in the air of the governor promising property tax relief, that it's applying a lot of pressure to a lot of different arenas, and when you, you know, look at tax levies and that, you know, like, I think schools are gonna be unique in what, how they do things going forward, depending on what you're willing to decide to use going forward. But I also think that bonds have a place, and it's all about how you communicate that bond to your community. A bond can be as successful as you want it, or unsuccessful, but it's all about how you propose it to your community, do you allow them to have input and a voice? Do you go down the hall and think you're gonna do seven million dollars, or redo a ball field, and do a ball stand, and rebuild a brand-new building? Well, you know, does it go fall from the knee down, or does it need a new track, or can we do just, you know, do some remodels of the building, and, and so I think that, there's a lot that goes into that, and I anticipate that that would take a lot of steps along the way, it's not something that I think that I would come in and just say, hey, I think we should do a bond, and the school board says, yeah, we should do one too, but it's something where we have some community input to say, what are our needs, what needs updated, what needs addressed, and how can we do that physically the best way?
Uh, do you have any experience with building additions or renovations, remodeling, and that's actually part of the question, was that you were in progress?
Um, I have no, I've written a grant, yes, I've written grants, but it was for athletics, so it wasn't really school, law, and issue-related. I wrote a grant when I was in council plus for athletics, it was one of, I don't know how many, it was, they had to deal with chocolate milk in schools, if you wanna be, wanna be honest with you. It was, so I had this catchy little slogan I created, it was kind of a, so it was a grant, but it was kind of a, an extra kicker grant. As far as building additions, you know, at, at ESU, I have been involved in, we are doing a renovation project, about four to five million dollar renovation project, project downtown Neely, you know, with RFPs and those types of things, so I know the process and the steps, but I haven't been, I don't, I'm not one who gets to make the final decisions. You know, I, I've been involved in meetings where architects come and they talk about, they present to the school board, and I've been involved with, you know, knowing how they can do that. ESU's very much different in the fact that we don't have the legal ability to build brand-new. So we have a school board who's been very, very sound, physically putting money away, so we have a cash reserve of six million dollars. And we also have some facility needs, that school board's been doing that for fifty years, you know, we have the same school board president for the last forty years, and, and, you know, come time to do our building renovation, we wanna do our, we wanna get an architect in and do all those things, but we find out through our lawyers, we don't have the ability to build a brand-new, it has to be renovations, so, you know, we're very different in the sense of how we do things, and our tax levies, you know, at ESU, if we wanna pass a bond issue, it has to pass in every county we serve with a yes, which is darn near impossible, that's not gonna happen. Not every county's gonna say, go ahead and, you know, not all seven counties say, yeah, go ahead and pass a bond issue. So drive directly, have experience in building a building, no. Part of that renovation is that we're gonna, we wanna build a bus barn at East River, because we have, you know, a bus that transports students and little chairs outside, that's, it's an expensive bus, and so it sits outside and gets weathered, especially out there, kind of in the cornfields, you know, the wind blows, and the snow blows, and, you know, they have the state patrol drives by, but we don't, we're not served by the county, you know, police, we're served by the county sheriff, and so, you know, been involved in that a little bit, but not directly.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
What's your vision for the next superintendent? I'm not sure you all can each have a session different, but as collectively, do you guys have any, I mean, do you have, these are some things we think that need absolutely addressed right away?
I want somebody that makes decisions, where a school district that actually is in pretty good shape, and I think they have pretty good staff, so we don't have to have, rather than looking for a lot of huge changes right away.
I think co-oping is a big issue, you know, just our athletic, G high, our numbers are low right now, and so that's, that's concerning, it needs to be addressed quickly.
Somebody that's willing to work with other schools, maybe sharing teachers, or all your employees, their members continue to grow.
It's really hard, because you, like, you know, you bump up with ESU one, and so, like, you know, you go just across twenty, and you're, you know, like, ran off with ESU one, but, it's almost like unified one, where they have a degree that's ESU one, but they're part of what you're ESU, you know, eight, so.
Any else?
I think student participation is way down, and I think if that changes, a lot of things fix themselves.
I agree. Open the idea, student participation.
Now, if that was the case, we'd wanna be talking co-op.
Okay, next bunch of questions will come from the community members, so you guys go ahead.
Well, do you have any ideas on how you can increase parent participation within the school and also attendance at school board meetings?
Offer food? I guess everybody happy, right? I'm not, you know, people have to offer lunch or dinner, no. No, you know, I think that when parents feel that, and I can't speak for how teachers handle things, now, how things are communicated now, because I'm not directly involved, like I said, I serve Plainview, I've been here multiple times, I know a handful of staff members, but, you know, I'm not without being the actual one who's in the building every day, I don't know, but, I think as somebody who's a parent who has child disabilities, you know, she'll have some behavior issues, I'm not gonna lie. And that first time the teacher called me, and I wanted it to be the first time that she's been in bad in her classroom, I want it to be, you know, I like having your daughter in class, she does these things great, but I have some concerns as well, and so I think that just being positive, but I also can go from the superintendent down, you know, and, you know, I think that being involved, being at events, you know, I was kinda joking about food, but being creative with, you know, not that you're gonna offer separate parent-teacher conferences, but maybe you partner with somebody or something, or you get a grant to get parent involvement increased, and so you can do some small things, we might say, hey, we're gonna have roles and during the set, parent-teacher conferences, you know, or maybe you need to change your times, or look at those things, and so I think that's one way you might address it, is just let them know that, you know, it's not just the time to come, sit down and say, Johnny's got a A, B, C, D, or F, but also make it meaningful, and be unique with how you can do that, does it need to be, you know, maybe it needs to be during, maybe we do it during the lunch hour one day, and then we also do it the evening that, that evening, and you have some professional call in between, or maybe you do it strictly in two evenings, or just really finding out and polling, like, when is a good time for the community members, because at the end of the day, that's who you're serving. And so I think there's a lot of things that you could look at when doing that, also, parent, you know, getting parents at school board meetings and having their input is valid, but also letting them know that their voice is heard, like I said, I can't speak for how things are done currently, because I'm not directly involved, but, you know, I think that valuing their input, listening, is the first step, and just being actively and involved in many different things throughout the community, and if it means being on boards for different, you know, organizations and those types of things, then that's what you do.
What do you consider to be your gravest contributions to the school's history you have worked in, and in light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district?
Um, I get back to you right away, I might not have the answer, you know, I get an email from a principal or superintendent saying, I need this or that, I'm gonna get back to you that day. First off, because I don't like it when people do that to me, I'm like, I sent you an email four days ago, do I respond or not, you know, it's something in my head, but I'm gonna get back to you, I might just simply say, you know what, Dave, I got your email, but I really need some time to think about this, and I'll, I'll give you the answer in a day or two, so at least you know I got it. But I think that just, you know, like I said, what can I bring to the table is that, is those things, but also, what was the second part of the question again?
In light of that, what would you feel you can bring to, in light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district?
What do I do? Someone who's gonna stay here, I'm not looking to retire in two years, I'm thirty-three years old, so I got about thirty years left to work. But also, you know, I don't, I don't desire to go be superintendent in the metro area, I got a lot of, a lot of other issues I don't wanna deal with, I have to work with the school board and have, I kinda view working in a smaller school setting is that you get to actually have still some student contact a little bit, you know, when you're a big school like that, you don't get to do those things, and so you're gonna get somebody who's committed to being here and being involved in many different things, and wants to stay here, obviously, it's not just my choice, you know, you have a job, you get evaluated, but somebody who's willing to commit to the long term, to see things through.
If you had to cut the budget, what avenues would you take?
Well, with about eighty, the eighty percent of staff salaries, it really leaves very little to cut. To be very honest, because I, I know what you spend working with our learning centers. I, I happen to have knowledge of how to run those, how to set those up, but I'm not going and do that right away, no, because they have great people, great staff there, but if I'm being told that we have a lot of students who might need that in the future, first off, is there a space that it can be done, you know, because there are a lot of things that go into that. You know, because a lot of things are going into the other space. You know, you're going to buy sensory items. Sensory, I'm going to, I'll be upfront, sensory items upfront will cost you $10,000, $15,000 easy. So you can't just buy a teacher, you can't just buy a pair and put them in a classroom. But the first thing you're going to look when you cut budgets is what is your other money besides staff salaries? Unless you're going to make your classrooms bigger and those types of things. Or do you have to just retire or you might go. Another school. So it's kind of twofold, I guess, is what I would say is that I might look at special ed and say, what are we doing? Can it be done as good or better here? And then I might also say, you know, we have a teacher who's been teaching science for the last 30 years. Maybe they're retiring and, and, you know, I know Kendall appears a little bit. Maybe I say, you know, how, how's your science teacher? Could we work this together? Could we do some Zoom lessons? And so, you know, could we contract some things with each other to do things like that? So I guess those are two things I'd look at first, just because I know that the first thing, most, biggest thing in the school budget is your staff salaries. You know, and you're not going to go in and just middle of the year say, hey, staff, we're going to cut your salary. Because that's not how it works. And not that that's the way it should be, but, you know, you also don't want to have 30 kids in a classroom either, you know. So I think a lot of things go into that. But that's, that'll be my first two looks I look at, I'll be honest with you. Don't know if I should admit that, but like I said, you can't just, you can't just create a level three program. I think you're going to hire a teacher or a parent and throw them in a classroom, because that's not how it works. It might work, but your kids won't be educated. They'll be, he'd be the babysitter for an expensive amount of money. But could you, with the right equipment, the right tools, do it? Yeah, you could. Without actually looking at the numbers, I wouldn't be able to tell you it could be cheaper, but that'd be one thing I would look at.
What are your thoughts on early childhood development?
I think it's vital. I believe that, that it's essential. I think the earlier you get kids involved, the less further behind they could become. I say that as a parent, but also as a, as an administrator and as a teacher. But, you know, if we can get kids and, you know, my daughter, I made a phone call when she was two and a half to North Park Club. And I said, hey, I have another law offer, you know. So I kind of have the questions to ask and those things. But I, and they never said no, but I, you know, they, and they told me, you can come to our preschool, you can go to Head Start. You can go to a preschool of your choice, you know, and we can do different things. And I just, as somebody said, I want to go to this school. Because I think schools who create early childhood programs or preschools for kids, sometimes you get those open enrollment kids who want to come to your school. And because they came here as a three, four, you know, five year old, before they were learning, they made friends. And, excuse me, they've seen the quality of education they're getting in, so they don't want to switch. And so they choose, they choose you over somebody else. You know, being in the metro, it's, it's competitive, people recruit. And that's one thing a lot of people look for is, you know, what one has the best early childhood for. That's where my kids are probably going to go, because that's where they're going to start when they're four. And some parents pay for that, you know, you go to Millard, people pay to go to Millard's. Not that we're going to be Millard or, you know, those sorts of things. But people pay to go to their early childhood because they want their kids in the system and that's what they're going to do. And so I think that you can be unique with how you do that and get the offer every day. You offer before school, after school, you know, there's a lot of ways to look at that. I believe that it should be offered, you know, kind of like, just like a preschool. So, sorry, long, long answer short, yes, they are vital.
How do you find yourself getting involved in the community other than the school?
Asking what I can do to help, you know, just, I'm not going to hand my phone number out. I mean, I don't care if people have it, but I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll more than welcome to give my phone number or my email to anybody who want to call me and say, hey, can you help us do this? Can you help us do that? You know, and without knowing exactly what's all here, but being involved in church organizations or being involved in, you know, the clown museum. I'm not going to go work there, they have, they need some volunteers to do things. That's a good way to just meet people, you know, and, and those types of things to be involved. Maybe it's, you know, going to the bowling alley and being visible and having dinner or whatever, just so people see that you're here. You know, you like to be a member of the community as opposed to just the school personnel.
Breaker, everybody's on or? Put that on, and then we'll come back if we're still.
Like to have a staff. Ask a question, please. Justin, our first question here, it says, the board issued you a directive, but you disagree with it. What would you do and how would you handle the situation?
Can you repeat the first part?
The board issued you a directive.
Okay.
But you disagree with it.
Ultimately, they're my boss, but I think I'd want to know an understanding of where we're going. And I would review the mission and vision of where we're going. Is that something that goes along with that? Or is it something where we might say, can we have a discussion and just know this? But at the end of the day, you know, I think that they're the ones who are making and been voted into the positions they're in. And so that, you know, I'm going to follow their directions as long as it's legally sound. You know, I might, if it's something that maybe is against the law, I might go back and say, you know, we relook at this, would you want to rethink about this? Because legally, this is what we really should be looking at. But if it's something where it's not, you know, a legal issue, at the end of the day, it's my job to carry it out and find the positives in it.
How do you communicate most effectively with your faculty and staff? And describe the process you would use to keep the staff informed about school issues?
Those face-to-face conversations are important, you know, and I think that, you know, like I kind of, I have an open door policy. But I don't, I take it beyond just open door policy. I want it to be, you know, you have questions or you want to be encouraged or you want to be professionally pushed to, to say, hey, I'm struggling with Justin in my class. He's going to be a ding dong or whatever that be. Would you come down and just give me some ideas of what I can do or what, maybe you could, you know, give me some pointers on how to do that? So in essence, just having a collaborative, mutually agreeable relationship where, you know, you feel free to voice your concerns. And you feel free to, to know that I'm going to value those concerns. But also to know that, you know, it's, it's sometimes decisions that have to be made that aren't favored by all. And so, you know, I think that for me, I love face-to-face conversations. Does that not mean that I have to email sometimes? Yeah, sometimes there needs to be a, an email. And a lot of times those emails are for me, what I do with my staff currently is I use an email as a, maybe I know a couple of my teachers are struggling with the same situation or same issue. I use that email as a reminder for everybody to sort of say, hey, don't forget, we have 10 days to get our IEPs completed, submitted, and back into me. So they can back go in the school, something like that. Now, does that mean if that continues and I'm just going to continue to send you emails? No, it means I'm probably going to come down and have a conversation to say, hey, can we talk? And is there something I can help you with? Can I assist you with this? Is there something that maybe you need that you're struggling with that I can help you get those done in a timely manner? Or is it just something you're forgetting and that you need to set reminders for yourself? And so for me, does that mean that it's always going to be a face-to-face conversation? No, that can always take place. I think that having monthly, you know, staff meetings is, is a good thing. If time permitted, I would have it weekly, just to be on the same page. It doesn't mean you have to be sit there for an hour and a half and shoot the stuff and, and talk about things in depth. At least I can give you an update of here's where we're going, here's what's going on. For me personally, I, I would do a newsletter that goes to all staff monthly as well, kind of talk about with the community, just so they'll know what's going on. But doing it just for staff, you know, don't forget we have, you know, these conferences coming in the area. We have these offers from ESU eight, or we have, you know, softball game, baseball game, football game, whatever it be, track event, whatnot, this week. And just to kind of highlight those things with the staff as well.
How do you characterize your relationships with employee groups in your present position? And is there anything that you would change with these relationships?
I don't know anything I would change with them. Like I said, I've kind of learned that those small conversations, like I said, just go up to staff and take them and go when they go above and beyond. Instead of just sending an email, it's easy to sit behind a computer and say, hey, thanks for coming last night to prom. But come and have that conversation with you. So I don't think I would change anything. You know, the one thing I might change, I guess, if I had to change one thing, is that it's really hard to be spread. You know, I go to O'Neill, it's 160 mile round trip. So, you know, I try to see my staff there once a week. When you're here, there's no reason why I couldn't be in the elementary building or I couldn't be in the high school and vice versa, multiple times a day. Just walking around, saying hi and seeing kids and seeing staff. But the relationship we have with each other is that we're collaborative and we're respectful of each other. They're not afraid to come ask questions, even the parents, they're not afraid to come in and say, hey, Justin, I was wanting to do this. And I thought, Sue, what do you think? You know, Sue happens to be one of my teachers. And I would say, well, let me think about it, you know. And so I listen to it and they know I'm going to listen to it. And they might never get a response from me, because a lot of times, some situations, I can't give you a response. Especially if it's, you know, complaining about something or whatever. And sometimes it's not worthy of me taking it further. So that's what I would classify our relationship as.
Justin, what role does the superintendent have in enlisting parents as partners in the education of their children?
It's got to be your foundation. You know, it's got to be a partnership, you know, and, and we'll never know what our kids come to school with. They've had a lot of things, working jobs, hungry, cold. But also, you know, those are, those are a lot of excuses we could make for not doing what we want to do, which is educate children and empower them. And so I think that, you know, it's, it's got to be a vital from the top down. And sometimes that means, you know, being unique with how you get parents to the school. I kind of, you know, I talked a little bit earlier, you know, how do you get parents to school boards? You know, I think it's got to be consistently communicated to them that they're valued, that their input matters. But also that they're an important piece of the, of the puzzle. And some will never get it, which is the hard part, because you want them all to get it. It looks like, you know, because we care about kids and there's a reason why we're going to teach them, because we care about kids. And sometimes it gets frustrating and it can be an uphill battle.
In your view of education, discuss the balance between curricular and extracurricular classes. And what role do extra and co-curricular activities play in a school system?
You know, I think kids, I mean, studies would show you that kids that are involved in extracurricular activities are usually the ones that are performing best in their classes. And I think we'd all probably agree that, yeah, you think about the kid who's, you know, you know, has a four-oh, but also plays football, does wrestling, runs track. Or, you know, does band, so they do everything and, you know, those are the kids everybody wants and loves to have. So I think they're directly related. Obviously, that you have to be able to participate. I was never big on cutting kids. I think that all kids have a place, especially those who struggle. And so, you know, when I was a coach, I created a system where, I'm not going to lie, you're on the team, because sometimes it's the only family they have. Sometimes it's the only hope they have. And so, but I'm also going to have expectations that if you're not doing your classroom work and you're not doing what you're supposed to do. I'm going to say you go meet with Mr. Johnson for 30 minutes before you come to practice and write a note from him. I'm not going to penalize you for going to meet with Mr. Johnson, because you're not going to be able to participate anyway. But you know what? You go meet with Mr. Johnson for 30 minutes, you come to practice, you get dressed, you come back out to football practice. And so they still feel like they're part of something. So I believe that they go hand in hand definitely. But I also think that they have to be held to be accountable, that, hey, I'm a student first, I'm happy, I'm a magician, or I'm, you know, a thespian second.
And what is your position on NISA testing as it is? And your thoughts upon going to MAPS testing as a Nebraska accountability test?
We did MAPS in Bellevue, I think we were testing like every other month in Bellevue. We did like, we did it at the start of the year, we did it at Christmas, we did it at the end of the year. So I feel like we're doing a standardized test every day, literally. You know, I think that, you know, especially with going to this whole kind of idea of local control with education and A-Quest and those types of things. That NISA scores are going to have a, are going to be a, a part of how we're looked at. Because they're kind of going away with how they do the AYP, they, you know, really progress, those types of things within the state. So I think that it will be a good thing for schools. I think there's a lot of changes and shifts that will come with that. So I think that, you know, being in special ed, it's really hard to, to say, I just love standardized testing. Because I'll be honest, I don't think it gives you, it gives you a snapshot of that kid that day at that time. But at the same time, it's things we're required to do. And especially with this whole going to the college test as an 11th grader, you know, it's going to change a lot of things. And is it going to be used simply just as that tool? Or is it going to be used as a tool to say, now, before you can graduate, you have to pass this test? Because there may be a lot of kids who don't. You know, and nationally, the, I think the ACT average for, I think it was like 23.8 composite score. When I pulled it up, NDE, which is, I think they say it's like 21, which is good. But as a state, we're really high as well. And so I think that with a lot of things that the legislature is doing right now is that it might shed a light that maybe education isn't as, as good, I guess you could say, as it really is. Because now you're going to have all those kids expected to take the ACT, which is going to probably lower your scores. Because you have kids who, who don't want to go to college, which is totally fine. Some kids, guess what, they want to go be electrician, they want to go be a auto body tech guy. I, I need those people, because my, you know, I get, I need tires and I need body work on my car at some point. So those people are needed and I don't undervalue that. So kind of a lot of things in that question. But, you know, it's important, we have to do it. I support it because it's what we, we need to do. Do I necessarily agree 100%? I'm not going to lie and say, yeah. And I don't think anybody would tell you I agree that, you know, NISA testing 100% or testing kids for colleges 100%. Because not all kids are going to go to college. Some kids want to work on the farm or some kids want to go be a diesel mechanic and, you know, go to Northeast Community College and be an auto body tech. And so there's lots of routes kids can go. And I think that, you know, we'll see where it goes, I guess. I mean, there's a lot of things coming down the pipeline. But, you know, MAPS testing, I'll be honest, I think I like MAPS testing better than NISA, just having done both. So I'd say I prefer MAPS testing over NISA, but that's just me personally.
How do you lead staff and create positive staff morale? How would you do that?
Create you when you walk in the door, be in the hallways around lunchtime, be at parent teacher conferences, be invisible and knowing that I'm a partner in this. Like I said, I'll be the first to get up and tell you, I'm, I'm not going to have every answer all the time, but I promise you I'll find the answer. I promise you I have people I can call. And I don't say that my job or lives is me calling the people. But, you know, even Stuart Clark's a great resource for special ed financing at ESU one. And there's many, many spend directors across the state that call him and say, hey, what are you doing X, Y, Z? Because they don't have all the answers and you're not going to have, always have the answers. And Stuart doesn't always have the answer. Sometimes he has to go to, you know, call Lincoln. And, and so, and even kind of going back to that whole budget question up here is, you know, there's a lot of resources out there you can use, especially like with NDE, when you're doing a budget. They'll come out and you can sit down with them and you go to admin days and you can talk about where you're at and where you're going and work together. And that's what I really envision being with teachers is that, you know, let's sit down together, let's talk together, let's sit at a table and agree that we can collaborate. And that I'm not better than you. I might have a different experience and different education than you, but sometimes your ideas are better than mine. And so that's okay and I value that.
Okay, what do you see as the most important role of the superintendent as it pertains to the faculty and students?
Being able to consistently communicate the vision of the school. Because I think that if, if I can tie everything we're doing to the vision and mission of our school, you'll understand where we're going and why we're going there. You know, I know, you know, empowering, you know, is, is a big thing here. I like the word empowering before I can come here, just so you guys know, not that you guys like it, but it's a good word. You know, educating and empowering students is a, is a vital piece. And so my job is to be able to balance a lot of different things, but also remain positive and, and, and doing those things.
How do you go about implementing needed change, such as with declining enrollment, co-op-ing and the new stuff coming down the pipe on testing?
Reaching across the table and saying, let's work together. Agreeing to maybe share staff. You know, if we can give our kids opportunities, and that doesn't mean you get rid of a staff, because we're going to share one. But if we have some, like I said, retiring, and maybe we have a highly qualified person 12 miles away. Why can we not talk about sharing those things or doing, you know? I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm not big on a student just sitting in front of a computer and getting their lesson. I think there's certain things you can get doing that. But especially like when you talk about some of those, you know, you talk about science, it's hard to, to sit behind a computer and do an online class for science. Some of those things you need to do hands-on. And so, you know, looking at ways we can do those things and reaching across the table and working together. But also giving our kids actual access to touchy, feeling to experience in those things behind, besides sitting behind a computer or behind, you know, electronic TVs. You know, with Zoom meeting or whatever that be.
Justin, in any capacity, teacher administration, what sort of unique, creative, out of the box type of idea did you implement that you saw results?
When I was in Council Plus, probably for my fifth year, I had a job offer to go to Miller. And everybody was like, oh, it's Miller, that's the best place to be. And I, I said no. I said yes, like Friday, and I was like, why do I live with those people? Like not, I don't mean those people, but just, it's a very different type of culture. I was at Council Plus Thomas Jefferson, we're the, we're the school by railroad tracks. It's like, like when Des Moines would come places, like that's the ghetto school, they've got a railroad track running through their school. And I'm just, we have a lot of kids who work hard for what they do. You don't have them in the ghetto because they have a railroad tracks running through our school. But then you have Miller, who's kind of that crest, just, you know, you have the ideology that they're the rich school. And so I just kind of thought about it and I was like, you know, I like. They're very two different kids and you got to be able to balance that when you get into education, those things. But what I did when I went back and they said, we want you back, because I want to have you back. They said, oh, by the way, will you go back and do behavior full time? And I said, under a few circumstances. I make the kids' schedules, because I know what teachers they work with. Because I'll be honest with you, some teachers are great with handling challenging kids and some teachers aren't. Because I'll be honest with you, some teachers are great with handling challenging kids and some teachers aren't. Um, and so I knew what places and classes my kids could go with the parent supports I gave them. So I hand-schedule them all, worked with the principal on where they're gonna go. But, uh, the one thing I did take on myself is I had made some community relationships with, um, just a local mom and pop pizza place. And I wanted my kids to be able to get out of the classroom and go do something. So every morning, went to the pizza place, walked there, it was a block away, and they'd clean it every morning, because they weren't open. So we'd go there, we'd clean it, and, uh, at the end of the week, they'd get a pop or pizza. Um, it was just something that, you know, wasn't sitting down and getting to do A squared plus B squared equals C squared. But it was something where they're getting a life skill, they get to go and they get to actually work, quote unquote, for something. And, and so it was, uh, kind of empowered a lot, empowered them and empowered me to not just, like, I'm a dumping ground. Um, it's not something that unique I did was just went to the mom and pop pizza place and said, hey, can we come? I mean, they're gonna tell me, no, yeah, can we come clean? Uh, no, don't clean. You know, and they loved it, you know. And, and they, I mean, they went above and beyond for our kids, they give them a pop like every day. I'm like, well, this wasn't gonna need more sugar, but, you know. It was just a unique thing we could do. So, uh, I also, uh, you know, we were talking coaching football. Um, I coached for the indoor football team there. Um, and I had a couple of kids of mine who, um, were, the biggest kid, mine was a behavior student. Um, his dad been in jail and didn't really have a father figure. He was African-American and I couldn't, I mean, like, I didn't, I don't understand, you know, I can understand the African-American culture, but I don't, I don't know all those things and it's very different. And so, um, having football players, I had access to other kids that were African-American, hooked them up with other kids. And so I brought this kid on to be a team manager, um, above outside, you know, wasn't, wasn't required of me. But, um, now he's a probation officer at this day. So it's kind of a unique situation where he's, he had me on Facebook, like, you know, like, you're going, who is this guy? And I'm like, now that's him, what? Like, what's he doing, a probation officer? No way, you know? This kid was, you know, in my behavior class, are you kidding me? But, um, you know, uh, probably people would say about me today too, so, you know, I may have to say that. But, uh, you know, so just going above and beyond for kids is something I've always enjoyed doing. Actually, one of your kids that goes to school here, uh, that comes to one of our learning centers, used to like to wear like the same clothes every day. And, um, and, and I don't know if he had them or not, um, had just said, I got many clothes, I have a homeless. I have like two closets full of clothes, pile of clothes. Um, and so I have like fifty-five sweater vests, because some of my staff, they come because I wear sweater vests. Like, first off, it covers, because I'm a big dude, so, but anyway, uh, that's why I have so many clothes. And so I, I went through, put them in the back of clothes. Now this, this, uh, this young boy wears, I gave him one of our football jerseys from when I was coaching in Lincoln. And he wears like the football jersey, like, he'd wear it every day he could. And sometimes I'd, he was like, can you take it off and let us wash it? So, you know, just doing little things like that, something I've always enjoyed doing.
So is having two closets of clothes in administration kind of thing?
Oh, I'm not shoes.
Off track here. I have three. What is the one thing you learned from each step in your career as a teacher or administrator that you think has helped you to become the type of superintendent that our school needs?
Someone who's not afraid to ask questions. I'm not afraid to go out and find the answers. I'm also not afraid to say, I might not know right now, but I'll find out.
And last, motivating others to follow your lead, especially in the face of resistance, is a key leadership trait. Describe a situation in which you motivate, motivated others to follow your lead in the face of resistance. And how did you accomplish that?
I don't wanna use, no, um, unsuccessful. Just kidding, I mean, first, unsuccessful, something, right? Um, no, um, I, uh, so trying to cut costs at learning centers, you know, um, they, I had a, I had to say no a lot of times. And so, uh, you know, kind of creating, but just because I tell you no, doesn't mean that I don't understand why you wanna do it. It doesn't mean I don't support you. But telling you no just means that, you know, maybe we look at a different way to do that. And so, uh, you know, was it resistant at first? That they would try to work other ways around me, like, you know, well, hey, can you give me the credit card so I can go to Walmart and get X, Y, Z? And they'd have them, they're like, oh, it's bought back? Because I was like, well, no, you're not gonna do that, you know? Or, um, they'd buy things on their own and then submit the receipts to, you know, for requisitions. I'm like, no, that's, we're gonna, either A, you're gonna buy through co-op or B, you're gonna buy it through me that's approved on a list. And so, um, was it kind of resistant? Yeah, on a small scale, um, but also on a big scale. Because I think at first I kind of felt like, well, he's saying no, that's, I mean, he doesn't, we're not gonna be able to do anything. Like, he can't cook every, every Friday at school? Well, no, that just means you need to be unique and actually plan things, you know? Don't plan it on Thursday and think I'm gonna give it to you on Friday. You need to plan ahead and, and be accountable to do those things and, and prepare. Um, and so I was resistant. Um, also, uh, when I was working in behavior, going back to Council Bluff, and I did the whole, uh, scheduling, we had a new principal come in, and she was a big believer that, uh, all behavior students were gonna do what everybody else did. And I was like, well, that's fine, but these eight are the ten percent on that tier three in a PBIS that are gonna kill every other classroom. And so you're more than welcome to put them back in there. And so, uh, I, uh, we had done a schedule and we had about fourteen hundred kids in this school, a four-A school in Iowa. Um, we had gone through and I had scheduled them all, teachers, and I had the parent supports. And, uh, then the principal was like, oh, we're, we're not gonna hire our parents or something else. And then it was, um, oh, yeah, we're just gonna put the kids where everybody else, with other teachers. And I'm like, okay, well, this will come in dumping around again. So it was resistant from the principal, when I'm a teacher at the time, and it was very hard to do it. But I had to let her learn, um, that it's okay to collaborate and talk about those things. And that's why I'm a big believer in, you know, I've had administrators who are very hard-headed and, and say, no, it's my way or the highway. And a lot of times, sometimes they're right, but sometimes they're wrong. And, and in that situation, I was like, you know, I've known these kids, I know where they've come from and what they're going through. And I know what teachers they do really well with. And, and so, you know, I was in a situation where I wasn't just gonna go tell her that, but I had to think of unique ways where I could kind of have those conversations and say, well, have you thought about this? Or have you thought about that? And just look at different perspectives. Um, and so in that sense, I did it from the bottom, as a teacher to an administrator, just kind of saying, well, have you thought about this? And just coming in prepared and, and, uh, you know, it, it changed a little bit, um, but it took baby steps.
Can you have any other questions for us?
Well, I think it asks any of these groups questions. What do you guys want for your next leader? Community and, or, or, community and teachers, staff, including secretary and principal?
Oh, you get ours when we lock down the building.
Oh, okay.
Someone that's involved, that we see as visible, positive?
What do you think your biggest needs are? You guys can answer both if you want, or?
Classroom-wise, I think things are, I'm talking from the high school part of things, so they might have a different opinion. But classroom-wise, I think we're strong. Um, activity-wise, right now, we're lacking. And we have to get more people involved, uh, with, with activities. That's, that's a huge thing, I think. Um, classroom-wise, the one, well, but I work with upper-level kids, they are, we're pretty good, you know?
For our community members, what do you guys want for your next leader? Next kind of face of the franchise, I guess you could say?
Kind of like what she was saying, involvement here and in the community.
So what kind of things would you recommend that person get involved with?
All people are different, what they feel comfortable being involved with. Uh, I would never say or tell a person you have to be involved in this if, if you don't care about that whatsoever. But in a smaller town or towns around our area and stuff, you're not seeing a lot of involvement by a lot of people i- in a community. And, and anything far as I'm concerned makes a bad spot or a death of the community is, is people getting involved in daily, daily organizations. Uh, not expecting to get paid or, or, you know, spend time, what, what, it's my time, I, I don't have enough time. Well, nobody has enough time. And, and you're seeing a lot of that in small communities, not just ours.
That's all the questions.
Very much.